Committee that is created by statute or created by the board to come back to the board and make recommendations relating to your policymaking duties. That committee would be a governmental body and would need to conduct their committee meetings in the public as well, again, unless there's a closed session exception or an exemption that would apply. Any entities created under Iowa Code Chapter 28E and then any advisory committee or task force created by a 28E to develop and make recommendations on public policy issues, those are rare. We don't have too many entities that we've created by 28Es in the district. We have a lot of 28E agreements, but not necessarily separately created entities. Committees are going to be subject to Chapter 21 when they're created by statute, even if it doesn't make recommendations on public policy issues. So if the statute requires a particular committee to be created by the district or by the board, then that committee is subject to open meetings law regardless of whether they're coming to you to make recommendations or not. Also, if the committee contains a majority of board members. Now, I know you guys divvy up your committee work so that you don't have a majority of the board on committees. This comes up sometimes in, well, we've got two board members on a committee. What happens if we have two other board members who show up just to watch? Right? That could create a, at least a question of whether that is a public meeting that then needs to be treated as such. And we can advise on those questions as they come up of like, hey, you know, it might be really helpful to have more than just the two committee members attend, you know, or we've had a couple of board members who have said they want to attend, you know, whether the board as a whole thinks that that's necessary or not. And so being aware that even just showing up at a committee, you know, if that puts you to four people, four board members in the room, could end up being an open meetings issue. So coordinating ahead of time, making sure you're not just popping into committee meetings if that's not a committee that you're on, and coordinating in advance so that if we need to post or if we need to get legal guidance on that, you know, you can do that without creating an open meetings issue. And then again, any committee created by the board with a charge to develop and make recommendations to the board on any policymaking duties, you know, really anything that the board might vote to take action on, if that committee or a representative from that committee would be coming to you as a board to say, I want you to act on X proposal or X plan or X policy, then that committee is going to be a committee of the board and subject to the open meetings law. Okay, so committees are created by the board if the board actually appoints the members of the committee or if the board authorizes the appointment of committee members by Dr. Roberts or members of the administration, or if the board has a policy establishing an advisory committee and then delegates the authority to appoint members of the committee. So it's not just when the board says, you know, these are the 10 people that we want on this committee. It is also when you tell Dr. Roberts, go put together a committee to, you know, to examine ways that we can include animals in the school setting and bring back recommendations for that for us. Even if Dr. Roberts is selecting the members of that committee, that is still board directing the creation of a committee. So examples, executive committee, facilities committee, finance committee, board policy committees, things like that can all end up being committees created by the board. All right. When is a gathering a meeting? We all hopefully have our calendars marked for the School Board Association Convention coming up in November. I'll be presenting if anybody wants to come sit in on my session. But the, you know, the School Boards Convention always generates questions in our office that we get, you know? Can we drive together? We, you know, I mean, if you're coming in from like the Sioux City area, right? Can we drive together? Can we have lunch together? Can we sit together? And so there are two exclusions, you know, generally that we are, that we have under the open meetings law. The first is for purely social gatherings, right? If it's a retirement party, a birthday, a lunch at a convention, and no business of the district is being conducted, then it's okay. All seven of you can get together to celebrate somebody's retirement. All seven of you can get together for a lunch or a dinner. You need to be mindful of the appearance that that might give and consider whether the optics in a particular situation are such that it would be wise maybe not to, but you're not prohibited from it. And certainly in social gatherings, there's absolutely nothing preventing you. But you also have to self-police. And that means don't slide into discussing board business, discussing a proposal that might be coming in front of the board, discussing items of interest if it's something that the board might ultimately vote on. So you really have to make sure that you guys are your own ombudsman's in those social gatherings. And then the second are ministerial gatherings. You know, if you're just putting your heads together to schedule a meeting or you're putting your heads together to, you know, set a location for a public forum, that's ministerial. It doesn't involve your policymaking duties, so you don't have to worry about it. Anything else if the, oh, do you have a question, Jackie?
Question. And that is on documentation. If we know we're going to be in the same place for purely social reasons, I think our practice has been to try and post that. Is that?
Yeah, I think we've recommended that in a number of cases of just to say, you know, all of the school board members are going to be attending the IASB Board Convention or, you know, whatever the case may be. It just sometimes, you know, that ounce of prevention is worth a pound of cure. And if you can get out and let people know, we know what the law requires and we are complying with the law, sometimes that additional notice, even though it's not required, can be helpful in kind of stemming that appearance of, whoa, why do I see all seven board members sitting together at Christopher's, you know? But generally, anytime you have a majority of the members of the board who are present either in person or electronically, and there's any discussion or deliberation relating to your policymaking duties, those are going to be considered to be open meetings subject to, subject to the requirements of notice, posting, making it available to the public, just like this work session. You know, you guys aren't going to be voting on anything tonight, but because there is going to be discussion relevant to your policymaking duties, it's a public session and it's open to the public. There are specific exemptions from the open meetings law. These are different from exceptions. Lawyers like to use very similar sounding words that mean something very slightly different, but essentially get you to the same place in the end, which is things that the board can do in private. So exemptions from the open meeting law are things where the, where the open meetings law doesn't apply at all. Class certified termination hearings under Iowa Code Chapter 279 would not be subject to the open meetings law. So we hold private hearings that are not public, but we don't have to post it as a closed session. But as, you know, Jackie, as you mentioned a minute ago, we do always put something out there and post on the door, you know, a private hearing is being conducted subject to Iowa Code Section 27915. So if anybody walks by, sees seven members of the board sitting, looking like they're doing official stuff, they know this isn't a secret, you know, Star Chamber illegal closed meeting, this is a valid exempt session. Another common exemption that we see a lot in schools is to discuss terms and conditions of employment for either non-bargain personnel or to have negotiation strategy sessions for your bargaining units. So when we get into bargaining this winter, we may have an exempt session with the board to have discussions around that. You don't have to post exempt sessions. We generally like to, but you don't have to put up an agenda. You don't have to vote to go into closed session or anything like that. Sample agenda, you're required to post a tentative agenda. You should not add anything to that tentative agenda other than in the case of an actual emergency. And we, I think, have given the guidance that very few things are actually going to be an emergency. You know, an emergency is not, gee, we'd really like to get this contract approved and we just got it today. Can we just throw it on the board agenda? Natural disasters, you know, things where you need to initiate, you know, your, God forbid, right? But I mean, we've seen it happen in other places around the state. You know, your tornado comes through levels of school and we've got to take action immediately to get school up and running again or provide emergency assistance. Other than that, it's usually not worth the risk and it's usually better business to hold that meeting so that you can post your agenda at least 24 hours in advance. You guys have a pretty good system for agenda posting, a pretty consistent platform for getting information out there. So I won't belabor the point too much because Rosie's been doing a great job and we don't need to tell her. All right. So key number two, complying with the three Ps of public meetings, posting procedures and publishing. Again, you know, you've got, you've got excellent staff who are taking care of handling the posting element of it. Your tentative agenda doesn't have to have every single, you know, thing described in great detail. You have to provide reasonable notice to the public of what the board is going to be discussing and potentially voting on at the meeting. Documents that are in draft form generally don't have to be attached to the tentative agenda. You can, and I know in a lot of cases, the board does have documents uploaded, reports uploaded in advance to the public facing agenda, but it's not, it doesn't have to be everything. The question isn't whether this is the best notice. The question is whether the public has been provided reasonable notice. So we're not sliding something into the, you know, into the board discussions that wasn't on the agenda that people, you know, might have attended if they had known about, right? But if we provide reasonable notice, we've done what we need to do.
Miriam, just a follow up on that.
Absolutely.
So the, a lot of the documents that we look at, sometimes you might consider draft because they are kind of fluid and evolving, right? As information timelines, things like that. Is it helpful to put draft on there? So even if it's being shared, that it's stated that it's a draft?
It's probably a good practice. Yeah, I mean, I wouldn't say that it's necessarily required by, by the open meetings or open records law, but yeah, it's probably a good practice just for clarity's sake. All right. Your agenda has to be posted at least 24 hours prior to the meeting. If it's impossible or impractical, again, kind of under those rare and unusual emergency circumstances, we have to give as much notice as reasonably possible and state the reason why we weren't able to in the minutes. News media who have filed a request have to be provided a copy of the agenda within 24 hours of the meeting. We have to post on bulletin board or other prominently easily accessible public places. And a lot of, a lot of districts post on the, online, but we still have that bulletin board requirement for, for physical posting. The agenda has to contain time, place, date, and tentative agenda. The location and time of the meeting have to be reasonably convenient for the public. So, you know, we're probably not going to be meeting at 11 o'clock at night. I mean, sometimes we, we finish a meeting late, right? But we're usually not going to be starting meetings outside of sort of normal human, you know, operating hours. And the location of the meeting has to be accessible. So we want to make sure, you know, I know most of your meetings are conducted here, but if you're ever looking at holding a meeting at another location, you know, we need to check things like, are the doors going to be locked or is there somebody available who can let people in? Can we, you know, can we unlock the doors like the, the front doors of central campus are, you know, for certain hours so that members of the public can actually come in and access that meeting? The items on the tentative agenda, you can only add a discussion item if no action will be taken. I would really just avoid adding late additions to tentative agendas within that 24 hours. Hang on just a second. I'm just trying to say, I know we, we have gone a little bit over on our closed session, so I want to make sure we're not taking more time than we need to tonight. All right. So procedures for in-person meeting. And I also want to note, I think Jackie, Maria, Rosie, and I maybe have communicated about this a little bit, but there is new requirement under Iowa law for all board meetings to give access to the board to attend electronically, you know, Zoom, Teams, Google Meet, telephonically for each and every board meeting. That doesn't mean that you have to attend virtually, but there always has to be an option. It doesn't require that that same option be provided to the public. I know you stream your meetings on YouTube and that's fine. That practice certainly, you know, can continue and kind of exceeds the minimum requirements of the law. But if you have a Teams link that you're, you know, that Patrick and Maria are on or if they're connecting by phone, that doesn't mean that that same link has to be provided to everybody. The new change to the law is only to make sure that board members who are not physically able to attend a meeting still can connect and do the business of the board remotely. Generally, unless there's a specific provision otherwise, all actions and discussions at a board meeting have to be conducted in open session, even where we have a permissible closed session under Iowa Code Chapter 21.5. The vote, the actual board decision following that closed session is going to have to happen in open session. Minutes have to be kept of all public meetings and they have to show date, time, place, members present, and any actions taken. You don't have, it doesn't have to be, you know, an incredibly detailed transcription of every word that's said during the meeting, as long as it meets the minimal requirements. Anything you're doing above and beyond that is great benefit for, you know, the district in having added transparency, but certainly, you know, this would be the minimum required. You can have, the, actually, sorry, I just realized, this slide is out of date. You can now have electronic-only meetings as of 2024 without having to have some special consideration for it. Generally, you don't have to publish meeting minutes under Chapter 21, but school districts are otherwise required under Chapter 279 to publish their meeting minutes, so keep on doing it. Key number three, when and how to go into closed session and what to do and not do when you get there. This is probably the biggest area where I think boards need to be aware of the requirements, the do's and don'ts. And again, kind of that self-monitoring, you know, work that you need to do to make sure that you're not, you know, running afoul of the open meetings law. I think anytime you go into closed session, it creates an idea maybe in some people's heads of like, what are they talking about? Are they supposed to be doing that? And sometimes you have to, right? Sometimes you're discussing student issues or specific employee issues, and those people have an absolutely valid right to privacy. There are other times where there may be safety and, you know, security planning that needs to be discussed that, you know, would compromise the safety of the district if those discussions were had in the open. And so absolutely valid times to go into closed session. But knowing that it can create that concern, knowing it can create that appearance, it's important to make sure, you know, you're really doing things by the book. So closed sessions have to be narrowly construed. There are several closed session provisions in the law. I'll go through the ones that apply to school boards in just a minute. But we really have to make sure that what we're discussing during the closed session is only within the parameters of that closed session. So if we're in closed session to talk about a personnel issue, we can't then start talking about student achievement data and what are we doing, you know, with busing and things like that, because we have to stay focused on the specific topic for closed session. If there's ever a question about whether a closed session is permissible, there should be a request from council to provide an opinion. It actually provides a defense to the board in the event of an open meetings challenge if legal counsel has weighed in. And even if we get it wrong, you know, you guys can blame us, but then at least you're not responsible for the violation. We try not to get them wrong. Most of these are pretty cut and dried at this point, you know? So closed sessions that you're going to use frequently. Reviewing or discussing records that are required or authorized by state or federal law to be kept confidential or that have to be kept confidential as a result, as a condition for governmental bodies' position, possession, or continued receipt of federal funds. So personnel records, student education records fall into this. Any records given to the governmental body that otherwise wouldn't have been made, wouldn't have been provided by an outsider if they knew that they were going to be made public. You cannot use this to avoid the specific personnel subsection. So we'll talk about, why don't we just jump there for a second and I'll go back to litigation? The personnel subsection says that you can go into closed session to evaluate the professional competency of an individual whose appointment, hiring, performance, or discharge is being considered, when necessary to prevent needless and irreparable injury to that person's reputation, and that person requests a closed session. So sometimes the discussion is not going to be damaging to their professional reputation or to their reputation, and sometimes the individual doesn't want the closed session. They don't request it of the board. So IPIB, the Iowa Public Information Board, which is the governing body that kind of provides guidance, advisory opinions, and case rulings on open meeting, open records law, has said, you can't avoid this requirement by using this prior 1A, the confidential records exception. So if you're talking about personnel, you have to go in under 1I and it has to be requested by the employee making the request. Now, the response to that, if the employee says, I'm not going to request it, is then you have that discussion in public session. Most of the time, that's not something the employee actually wants, but sometimes we find ourselves in a bit of a chicken situation of, you know, who's going to blink first. You can also go into closed session, as we did tonight, to discuss strategy in matters that are presently in litigation or where litigation is imminent, if the disclosure of that information would be harmful to the district's position in that litigation. It's really important to note, council has to be present for any closed session under this section. That can be in person or telephonically, but you have to have district attorney present for the entirety of that closed session. I remember one time, not in Des Moines, I was asked to leave so the board could talk about whether they really wanted to settle the case or not. And I was like, I'm really sorry, but if I do, it's going to be an illegal closed session and I don't think you want that, but I promise I'll sit here quietly and let you guys deliberate about whether you want the settlement and whether I agree or disagree. You know, you get to tell me what to do. I don't get to decide. So that's an important, important piece of that one. Discussion of the purchase or sale of particular real estate, I think, is another one that is relevant and comes up a lot, but that is sometimes over-construed, that, you know, anytime we might be talking about what we're going to do with buildings or maybe do we have stuff we want to sell? Do we have, you know, kind of things that we, that we might want to do with the district's physical plant? It's not a blanket for any discussion of district property. It's really only for the purchase or sale of particular real estate. You know, we've identified, what was it, 15 years ago, you had that green space up in Beavordale that's now the retirement community? That was, there were a lot of feelings about that one at the time. I was hoping maybe we were far enough out that that would be a, a safe example, but never. Safe Rice Field. But that, you know, that, that is a particular plot of real estate, right? That was being considered for sale by the district. And you can go into closed session for that if that would, if, if having an open session discussion about what would you sell Rice Field for? And I know for some, the answer is probably nothing ever for any, and, you know, any amount of money. That you could do that if it would disadvantage the district's negotiating position on price, right? If by knowing, hey, we're willing to sell it for X, then people know your bottom line, right? And they're not, you're not going to get the best price. But it's really, really important to note two critical things about this. One is that you have to make the minutes and the recording of that closed session public after the real estate transaction is complete. So once Rice Field sells, it's not, the closed session now becomes public. So you have to really bear that in mind in those discussions. And so it's really important that only discussion about the purchase or sale of that property occurs during closed session. And I would say in any closed session, assume that there is some chance greater than zero that that recording ends up being disclosed at some point. It is greater than zero, right? Because you could get an open meetings violation, a judge might do an in-camera review and say, well, yeah, I think 90% of the discussion in this closed session was appropriate closed session discussion, but for this 10%, I actually think you guys veered off topic and we're going to make this 10% of the closed session discussion open to the public. So I think, you know, we just need to be aware that that's always a possibility and, and just to be thinking, you know, not to prevent yourselves from having a candid discussion, but to be making sure, one, are we sticking to the topic that we're in closed session to discuss? And two, that we're not saying anything that's, you know, off the walls with the understanding that nobody's ever going to hear it but us, right? Because I think you always have to assume that that chance may be somewhat more than zero. Maybe not a lot, but a little bit more. You can also, and this is one we've used more, more frequently, I think, in recent years, go into closed session to discuss information contained in records of the district that are confidential under this provision of the Open Records Act and it relates to information and records concerning physical infrastructure, cybersecurity, critical infrastructure, security procedures, and emergency preparedness if the disclosure of that information could be reasonably expected to jeopardize life and property. It's 2024 and we know that we are having to make sure that our schools and our premises are safe and that sometimes providing all of the information about our safety plans to the public might be putting information into the hands of people who would use it to harm. There's a reason TSA doesn't make all of their procedures public for how they screen at airports. You know, there are some things we know, right? The three-ounce bottle rule that has sacrificed more than one good, good product for me. And, you know, the shoes and all of that, but there's a lot that goes on that we don't know. There's a lot of that screening process that we're not aware of, you know, where the, where the extra cameras are, where the, you know, non-uniformed security personnel are, all of those things, right? And that's because we don't necessarily want somebody who might be trying to get on a plane to do bad stuff on the plane to know how to evade that security. And this exception is exactly the same, right? I know, you know, the district, I think, has put out some good helpful information to the community about the forward-facing, you know, public side of the security to help parents and community members feel safe sending their kids to school. But knowing that there are things that it may be recommended by, you know, the district's internal team, it may be recommended by law enforcement, when you're working in partnership with state or federal agencies, to say, this is stuff we don't want people to know. We don't want people to know the passwords, you know? We don't want people to know, you know, exactly where all of the, you know, sort of behind-the-scenes security is because we don't want them to be able to evade it. So you can go into closed session to have discussions about those. There are special voting rules for going into a closed session. You have to do a roll call vote. You have to have an affirmative vote of either two-thirds of the members of the board, regardless of whether they're in attendance or not, or all members present at the meeting. So if you have a seven-member board and you have two members absent, all five would have to, that who are present have to vote in favor of the closed session. If four vote yes and one votes no, you cannot go into closed session. The vote has to be roll call vote publicly made and announced and entered into the minutes. If the vote fails, the board needs to proceed to the next item on the agenda and not take any further action at that meeting on the agenda item that was subject of the proposed closed session, unless you have like a fallback, you know, action item. So let's say that it was a personnel matter and, you know, you can go ahead and maybe vote on that personnel matter without the closed session, but if it's not posted on the agenda, you just move on to the next item. You can put it back on the agenda for a future meeting. The reason for holding the closed session has to be announced publicly. You've got to enter it into the minutes and we're always able to provide the specific wording for that so that, you know, you've got it by the code section and the language associated with the code section. If there is more than one reason you're going into closed session, you should give all of the applicable reasons on the agenda and in your, in your motion and vote and in the minutes. So any business discussed during closed session has to relate directly and specifically to that reason that you've gone into closed session. If you need to discuss more than one subject, like if you've got a student disciplinary matter and a personnel matter, or a litigation matter and a real estate matter, you have to post separate closed sessions and vote to go into the, you know, let's say that it's the, the personnel matter, vote to go into the closed session, do that, go back into open session, and then vote on going into closed session on the real estate matter. So it's not kind of like a one-size-fits-all of like, well, we'll just do one closed session vote and stay in closed session throughout. And you can kind of do a little bit of like, you know, nose counting in closed session to make sure, you know, when we go out into open session, do we have a consensus? Do we have a majority? Do we have a unanimous vote? But the actual vote has to be taken in open session. So, you know, Jackie, you could kind of do like a whip around the table, get, you know, get an idea of where everybody's at as long as that actual vote is recorded in open session. The board can invite anyone into closed session who has a legitimate interest in the subject of the closed session. It is really for the board to decide who attends the closed session, even if it's a closed session about a particular employee, unless it is a, you know, a specific termination hearing where the employee is entitled to be present by law. The board can have discussions about personnel without that person there, as long as the employee has requested the closed session. The, you know, other example being litigation, you have to have us there whether you want to or not. Of course you do. But generally, outside of those places where you're required, you get to decide who's in the closed session and who is not. Anybody who is in the closed session is bound by whatever expectations of confidentiality, but I would always make sure you share those expectations, particularly if it's somebody who doesn't regularly attend closed session, you know, like Dr. Roberts, who would be familiar with that in general. Making sure they understand, you know, when you walk out of here, you're not, you know, we are not expecting you to go discuss the details of this real estate transaction, for The administrators and board secretary may be excluded, but if you exclude your board secretary, you have to have somebody else taking minutes and maintaining the record, the recording of the closed session. So just make sure you've got a recording secretary appointed for purposes of the closed session. Somebody has to be taking detailed minutes. So if it's not going to be Rosie, it needs to be somebody else who is, you know, physically present in the closed session and able to take detailed minutes of the closed session. The minutes in the recording go into a sealed envelope and they don't get disclosed unless there is some sort of a legal challenge requiring those to become unsealed. And you have to maintain them for at least one year, but if you get a public record request for closed session minutes, you do not provide those closed session minutes. You don't provide the recording. However, any board member who could have been present but who wasn't should be allowed to listen to the recording of the closed session. So, you know, Kim, if you had to miss a, a real estate discussion and you really wanted to know more, you could absolutely get a copy of that recording. And I also wanted to mention recusal during closed session. If you're, if you need to recuse yourself from a vote, you should recuse yourself from the entirety of the closed session. So if you determine you have a conflict of interest, if you determine that, you know, it's not something that you can adequately fulfill your, your duties as a board member of, you know, impartiality and fairness for whatever reason, it's not enough just not to vote. You need to exempt yourself from the entirety of You need to exempt yourself from the the entirety of the discussion leading up to it. So if you've got a spouse whose business is being, you know, considered for a contract with the district, presumably you've already disclosed that, you've made that conflict of interest known, it's public, but you would also then need to exempt yourself from any discussion about that contract and the vote itself. When the closed session begins, you need to make sure that everybody identifies themselves by name and title. Minutes need to include a list of everybody present, any actions occurring, although generally there's not going to be any, like I said, any vote or any final action taken, and then any discussion that occurs during that meeting. Any minutes and audio recordings can be unsealed by the court in an in-camera review, which is where the court basically says, I'm going to review this. I'm not going to make it available to opposing counsel or the opposing party or the news media, but I, you know, Judge Van Huclem, am going to listen to this recording and see whether I find that there's any evidence of violations. And then the court needs to make a determination about, nope, this was a valid closed session. There's nothing, you know, nothing to be disclosed. Or they may, you know, they may open it up. The Iowa Public Information Board also has the authority to review closed session minutes and recordings. Okay. How to insulate and defend yourselves as board members and the board collectively from challenges and what the penalties are for violation, because sometimes it helps to know that there's a stick to go along with a carrot. If a plaintiff shows that the defendant is a governmental body and it went into closed session, the burden for proving that the closed session is legal actually shifts to the board, which is unusual in a lot of cases. Usually, the plaintiff has the burden of proving their case. In this case, the board would have the burden of proving that it did not violate Chapter 21. Violations are not more than $500 per individual board member, or not less than 100. But if there was an intentional or knowing violation, the range is 1,000 to 2,500. Subsequent second violations can result in removal from office. And the funds cannot come from the district. So unlike almost everything else you do as a board member, where you are defended and indemnified by the district as a corporate body, for open meetings violations, if you are found to be in violation of the open meetings law, that comes out of your own pocket. So again, more incentive other than just, I think, most school board members just want to do the right thing because it's the right thing to do. It's a great thing about working with people in public service is that's generally where everybody's head and heart is at. But also good to keep in mind, it is financially very much not in your best interest to play fast and loose on closed session rules. The court can also order payment of costs and reasonable attorney's fees for the plaintiff who successfully establishes a violation. Additionally, court or the Iowa Public Information Board can void any action that was taken in violation of the open meetings law within six months. Or if the court or IPib finds that the enforcement of Chapter 21 outweighs the public interest in sustaining the prior action. And then I just mentioned, you know, removal from office for subsequent violation of of the, you know, for the same board member. And a court can also issue a mandatory injunction prohibiting the board from engaging in future violations of Chapter 21. So some pretty significant penalties associated with it. However, damages will not be assessed if the board member shows that they voted against the closed session. So if you've got, you know, five board members who vote to go into closed session and two who say, I think this is illegal, I don't think we should do this, those two, if the, if it was in fact an illegal closed session, those two will not be fined, they will not be found to be in violation. Or if the board had a good faith reason or good reason to believe and in good faith believed the facts that if true would have indicated compliance with Chapter 21. So if, for example, you were told that an employee had requested a closed session and it turned out that they had not, right? If you believed that in good faith and you had no reason to believe that information was inaccurate, then you would be defended from from an Open Meetings Act violation. Because had the employee requested it, it would have been a valid closed session. If you reasonably rely on the decision of a court, an opinion of the Attorney General or the school district's attorney given in writing or memorialized in minutes at the meeting, then you are also protected. So again, that's where, you know, asking our office, even if it's a quick email saying, yes, this is valid, here's how you do it, provides that defense against a a closed session violation. Or if you reasonably rely on an advisory opinion of the Iowa Public Information Board. And then just where to go if you have questions. Of course, you know, channel questions through Dr. Roberts or Jackie to our office. We are always happy to help. But there's also good public available guidance on Iowa Public Information Board's website. They also provide technical assistance by phone or email. And I found that they can be pretty responsive when you've got a question. I think I called one time and had their associate director call me back within an hour, and it was just like blown away by the responsiveness. It was very nice. And then the Iowa Attorney General's website also has some advisory opinions and guidance on open meetings law. Iowa Freedom of Information Council also provides information on its website as well. Any questions on meetings before we turn to records? Okay. All right. So I think my biggest overarching piece of guidance on records is, don't respond to a records request yourself. Always get guidance through appropriate channels. So if somebody sends a records request to any of you individually or all of you collectively, go through Jackie or Dr. Roberts, get it to me, get, you know, Rosie, get it to me, however it needs to be done. But don't just fire off records in response. And sometimes you're going to get pressure from requesters, you know, I've got a 3 o'clock deadline for my story, and I need to have X, Y, and Z. Somebody else's deadline is not your emergency. We want to be prompt and responsive, but we don't rush to fire things off, because there are confidentiality expectations in, you know, your employees and your students relating to some matters that, you know, you might be asked about. So we don't want to just fire off the record and then find out after the fact, oh, whoops, probably shouldn't have provided it. So that's biggest overarching piece of advice, but let's let's go through some of the details. So generally presume any records that are being created or maintained by you, by any employee of the district, that relate to the district are public records, that they are going to be subject to Iowa Code Chapter 22. Every person has the right to examine records of the governmental entity. Generally, examination of records at no charge, other than the the cost of fulfilling the request, and we'll talk about costs in just a second briefly. I get questions all the time, you know, they'll have, the email will come from somebody that the the superintendent or the business manager doesn't know, and they'll say, is this a legitimate request, you know, based on who's sending it? Anybody can make a public records request. So it is a legitimate request, regardless of whether you know the person or not, whether they're affiliated with an organization or just a, you know, private citizen. We get requests from out of state all the time. There are groups down in Florida that reads, like regularly do, you know, requests for all public contracts that have been approved by the board, a list of all of your employees, and, you know, the the dates of hire and things like that, you know, we'll get from like clear across the country. Those are all valid requests. There's nothing in law limiting who can make that request. Examination and copying, though, can be done, should be done, under the supervision of the lawful custodian, the district of the records. You can do it by email. You can have somebody come in and review documents in person. You can condition fulfillment of a request on paying the fees associated with that request. So we can charge fees for copying. We can also charge fees for the time that it takes to pull the records together. If somebody's asking for information that's going to take hours to produce, the law says that should not be borne by the public entity, i.e. by the taxpayers. That should be borne by the the person making the request. Also, sometimes costs in reviewing and making redactions to make sure that confidential information isn't being disclosed. And we can work, you know, kind of on a case-by-case basis on what those fee estimates, I think we work with Tanya pretty regularly in district office on communicating with requesters. But just, you know, kind of be aware that there are processes in place, that we try to make sure we're following the same process every time. Generally, need to respond to requests as soon as possible. There is no firm deadline in the statute. Word got out somehow that you have 10 to 20 days to fulfill every request, even if we're asking for every email that has Dr. Roberts's name in it, right? No way. I mean, that's going to be, I would guess at this point, hundreds of thousands of individual records, right? You don't have to comply with a, you know, you have to have these to me in 10 days or else. It's a reasonable time without undue delay in, you know, kind of in consideration of the scope of the request. So little requests, we should try to turn around pretty quickly. Big requests are going to take longer. How do we head off complaints of people running to IPib and saying, I asked for these records 21 days ago, and they haven't produced the 100,000 emails with Dr. Roberts's name on them? You know, we try to communicate with the requesters upfront to make sure they know. That's going to take a lot of time. Are you sure you really want every record mentioning Dr. Roberts? Or can we narrow the scope? Or, you know, just trying to be transparent and understanding, you know, you're asking for a lot, and it's going to take us some time to fulfill it. But also trying to make sure if all they're asking for is a copy of the employee handbook, that we send them the link, or if they need a paper copy, we print it out and give it to them, right? You know, within a matter of a days. You have to also sometimes delay to make a determination about whether records are confidential or not. Sometimes they are, and we can't or shouldn't produce them. There are some new limitations and requirements around fees. I'm not gonna, I'm not going to belabor those right now, because I think that's really more of an administrative function than a board function. All right. So let's talk about a little bit on the specific what might be confidential, what we might be looking at keeping confidential versus what is actually public. Contracts of the district are going to be public documents. Policies, handbooks, payments and invoices, construction and bid documents, committee reports, internal meeting agendas, anything that's listed on the website, any email correspondence that doesn't contain confidential information are all examples of things that are going to be public records. So important, I think, when you're creating records, to be mindful of that presumption that they are probably public records. And to be thinking in terms of, is this information that we, you know, we feel comfortable sharing with the public, and how do we feel comfortable sharing it? Going into the development of those records can be very helpful, rather than finding out on the back end, oh, I thought I was writing a bunch of, you know, a bunch of confidential reports, and it turns out it's all public. Here you go, right? So just starting with that assumption, starting with the assumption of openness, that that the majority of what we're doing is open, I think can help prevent misunderstandings on the back end.
Miriam, just a quick question on contracts. So is the, is the assumption that some type of no bid, or it's not no bid, competitive bid, that is the process of the bid selection public as well?
Yeah. So for competitive bidding, when you're dealing with a, you know, like a public improvement construction project, if you're in competitive bidding, you have to follow the specific requirements of the statute for competitive bids. And that means, you know, doing your bid opening at a specific time and making those things available, right? Up until that point, you know, they would not be, you know, needing to be opened until you do the the bid opening. And the same thing when you, you know, if you're, if you're dealing with contracts for goods and services, or things that are not subject to to public bidding or public competitive quote requirements, you know, those are going to be procedures established by the board. But I would, again, always kind of start with the presumption that they're probably going to be public. If not initially, then at some point down the road, they're going to be public. You know, draft documents are, you know, kind of the key example there, a lot of things. You know, we might be negotiating a contract, and while it's still being negotiated, that contract's in draft form, it's not a public record. We're not going to disclose it, you know? At the point that the board approves it, the final contract is a public record and would be subject to disclosure at that point in time. Any document that's discussed and made viewable to the public at a public meeting should not be treated as confidential. Any final settlement agreement or summaries of settlements are public as well. And I think every time I've come into closed session with you guys to discuss a settlement agreement when we're getting ready to approve it, try to make sure that I reiterate that every time. There's no such thing as a confidential settlement for a public entity under Iowa law. So when you settle, you know, litigation, whether, you know, it's cost of doing business, you know, kind of nuisance settlement or something more, we're going to have to make the details of that settlement public. And then most personnel records are confidential, but there are some exceptions for certain confidential, or for certain personnel information that would not be confidential, including any individual who resigns in lieu of termination, who was terminated or demoted as a result of a disciplinary action. In those cases, you're actually required to provide upon request the reasons and rationale for that personnel action. And again, that's something, you know, we work with Phil as needed, we work with talent and personnel to make sure that, you know, that provision of law is being is being complied with and that we're wording things, you know, in a way that's appropriate. Other public personnel records, name and compensation of individuals, I still get questions from time to time from other districts about, you know, somebody asked for all of our teacher compensation, do we have to give that to them? Yeah, I have to give it to them. We have to tell people what we're paying public servants, right? The dates that they were employed, positions that they hold or have held, degrees that they've obtained or educational institutions, previous employers and positions held, employee leave records, although not why, but like the number of sick days that employees have used, work numbers and email addresses. We generally don't ever give out personal contact information. And then maybe resignation letters, again, depending on the rationale for for why, would all be confidential. But other than that, anything in an employee's personnel file is confidential. So we have to make sure that, you know, when we are discussing personnel matters in, you know, closed session, that that information is not, you know, disclosed outside of the closed session. And people coming in to request that generally are going to be told, no, we're not going to provide it. Also, attorney work product, anything relating to litigation or claims made against the school district is going to be confidential under under the Open Records Act. Student education records for prospective current or former students. Any communication not required by law, rule, procedure, or contract that is made by somebody outside of the district where they would not have made that if they had known it would be public. What is that? This is like a whole long paragraph, essentially kind of a whistleblower protection. You know, if a parent sends an email to the building principal and said, hey, when I was at pickup the other day, I just wanted to mention, you know, I saw, you know, X unsafe, you know, condition, right? There was a hole in the cement, and I'm worried about people falling into it. Or, you know, even more so, you know, I I saw a staff member reprimanding a student in a way that didn't really sit right with me. You know, if that community member would not have come forward and said, hey, I saw this, you know, this staff member reprimanding a student didn't sit right with me, if they knew it was going to be a public record, then we can withhold it. But we we can strew this one fairly narrowly, as well as all of the confidentiality exceptions. Real estate appraisals, again, you know, kind of not wanting to harm the district's bargaining position in sale or purchase of any real estate, but with a limited understanding that, you know, information may become public after the transaction is finalized, even if it can be held close while that transaction is pending. And then, as we were discussing a minute ago for closed sessions, anything relating to security, physical infrastructure, cybersecurity, if disclosing that information could be expected to jeopardize life or property in the district, you can keep those records confidential. We talked about settlement agreements briefly. Where needed, we provide a summary instead of the actual, the actual settlement itself. And now let's talk about what I think everybody needs annual reminders on, including, I think, every attorney and every human being on the planet who has access to cell phones. What about emails and texts? When you are doing district business, whether you're doing so on a personal device or a district-issued device, and I would encourage you to use your district-issued devices exclusively to the maximum extent that you can to avoid your personal devices being put into contest in litigation. And whether it's on a personal account, a district account, or, you know, some of these where it's not entirely clear, is this my public Facebook page or my private Facebook page, and how am I using it can be, you know, confusing. It is important to be aware that regardless of where that communication exists, if it is about your business as an elected board member, or, you know, as an administrator of the district, those are subject to the public records law. So don't use Gmail if you don't want your personal Gmail account to be potentially subject to a public records request or discovery. And litigation discovery can be much more intrusive than your average, you know, public records request. Don't use your personal device if you don't want your personal device to be in contest. But I know you have people reaching out to you in all kinds of ways that may not respect your preferred channels of communication. So I would suggest, think about how you want to be communicated with. If you receive something, if somebody sends you a direct message on Facebook or Instagram, it's perfectly okay to reply back to that person with your district email address, or to even say in response, can you please email me at jackie.norris@dschools.org? I try to conduct all all board business through my district email. That is a perfectly acceptable response. And then that keeps your Facebook page or your Instagram page out of, hey, we've got a public records request, we need a public records request, we need all of your messages, which might include messages back and forth on, on social media. So, it's not relevant where the record is, it's relevant what's in it, I guess, kind of at the end of the day. IPib has agreed that if it's, you know, a personal, private device, if it is a public record that's on that personal device, then that public record is subject to open records requests. You might also consider, and I think the district has put this in everybody's, in all of the DM schools, signatures comes through with a, you know, this may be a public record if you're not the intended recipient, something like that. I think you've got standard language that goes out, that just kind of notifies people, like, "This is a public record," or "It may be a public record," and "May be disclosed upon request." Here again, we have violations, same dollar amount for the open meetings and open records law, so, you know, kind of a unintentional accidental violation, damages run from 100 to $500. Intentional violations, 1,000 to 2,500, again payable out of the personal funds of the board member, not the public funds of the school district. Again, defenses to individual liability, very similar, if you voted against any action that would be a violation of the open records law, if you refused to participate in any action violating the open records law, if you engaged in reasonable efforts to resist or prevent the violation. So, again, this is where I think, you know, public, public servants are, you know, kind of expected to be self-policing. I mean, there are also outside governmental agencies to enforce, but you are your first and best line of defense to say, "Hey, I don't, I don't think we should be doing this by email," right? You know, that's always an appropriate thing to say, or say, you know what, hang on a second, stop, I think we need to, you know, ask legal counsel if this is something that we can be doing, or, you know, I think we need to get guidance on how to respond to this records request. We are all always in a hurry, we are all far too busy and overscheduled, I think, in our lives, all the time, but it's important with some of these things to slow down, take the time to really make sure you're doing the right thing, that you're following whatever the district's process is. It's easier to keep the cat in the bag than to get it back in once it's out. Not the best analogy, but it's, it's getting late and I've been talking for a while. You also, again, similar, similar defenses of, you know, did you reasonably rely on facts which if true would have constituted, you know, appropriate action, or decision of a court, the AG, IPib, or district legal counsel saying, "Yeah, that's totally okay, keep that confidential." If you did, and this, again, is a good reason to seek advice, then you are defended from being responsible for that violation. IPib, again, is a great resource. If you have, you know, kind of general information questions, like I go on their website all the time to read their FAQs, to read their advisory opinions. When I can't find what I need, I call them pretty regularly. One other thing I just wanted to mention, because I didn't cover it during open meetings, and then I do promise I'm done, is the walking quorum, and I know we've talked about it before, but I think, again, it always bears repeating and reminding that, you know, a quorum can happen when you have four or more people physically present in a room talking about board business. A walking quorum, which is also a quorum, which can also be a violation of the open meetings law, can occur when it is a series of smaller conversations between board members that add up to a quorum. And that could be, you know, Jackie, that could be Dr. Roberts, that could be me, you know, anybody acting as that intermediary can create a walking quorum. So, it's perfectly appropriate to provide information in a one-way direction to board members. So, you know, Jackie, you might call everybody and say, "Hey, just wanted to let everybody know, we were notified that there was an incident at X school, and, you know, we've talked to Dr. Roberts, and we're working with whoever we need to, just wanted to let you know," right? That is different from calling each board member and saying, "Hey, Anna, we've got this board policy that we're talking about, you know, I'm not sure if we've, if everybody's kind of, you know, in agreement, give me your thoughts on this board policy." And then, you know, getting Anna's thoughts and calling Jenna and saying, "Hey, Jenna, just talked to Anna, here's what she's thinking about the board policy, what do you think?" And then by the time I get to Kim and I'm doing that same thing, now I've got four board members, I've created a walking quorum. So, it's just important to kind of be mindful that even if it's not four people talking outside of a board meeting about board business, if we're doing it in ones and twos and threes, adding up to a quorum, that is also prohibited conduct. So, just being mindful of the conversations that you're having offline and being, you know, being judicious, and is this something that we really probably do need to discuss in a board meeting, as opposed to, you know, kind of having a sidebar conversation. That's what I've got. I am happy to take questions. I know we've taken a short board meeting and tacked on kind of a longish work session, but yeah, any questions, I'm happy to take.
I just want to say, I thought that was great. I think part of this is making sure that all of us are our own, you know, policing mechanism, so it is really helpful for everybody to go through it, so thank you for dedicating the time. I, I don't have any questions. I know that Dr. Roberts and I have spoken, he is also going to make sure that his team goes through an annual training of some sort, as it's relevant to, to this, from the staff perspective. Questions, comments? Mr. Dix, Ms. Alonso?
No comments. It was a really good review, though. Thank you.
Thanks, Maria.
Great. Thanks, Miriam, really appreciate it. Thank you.
Absolutely. Thanks, everyone.